And welcome to the Education Meeting Room Session. It is November 14th. It is 4:19. We're a little bit late starting today. We just came out of an executive session, meeting with Superintendent for her annual evaluation. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan? Five board members present.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, she may be joining us via Zoom in a few moments. She may not, and Sullivan had surgery last week and is recovering, but unable to make it in person tonight and may or may not be able technically to call in. So we'll start with board member comments and reports, start with Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, I apologize for missing the last meeting. I double-scheduled myself and I'll make sure I do a better job of that going forward. Last couple of things I have attended. Habitat for Humanity Hope Springs groundbreaking ceremony on 10/25 was really cool, just to see how big a deal that is and just to kind of get educated on affordable housing. That's one thing I hadn't really contemplated or paid much attention to. So that was really cool to watch that and be a part of that. The board candidate interviews, that was a good process for me to go through and just see how that worked and then just to see there were six people willing to, you know, step up and put their name in the hat. So other than that, I went to the Common Grounds for the Chamber of Commerce on the fourth before Election Day. And she again voiced her support to the Young Professionals Group of Colorado about their support for 4A and it obviously played a role in the passing of that on Tuesday. So excited for that and just glad to be here.
Ms. Pappas?
Yes, it has been a really busy couple of weeks. Just a couple of highlights for me. I was able to go to the Special Olympic Bowling for Middle Schools last week. That is always just such a good time. So I appreciate getting invited to that. Then we also had a visit to N.K. Hyman and that was also a great visit. I appreciate that the students were able to take us around and explain their work. And then I also didn't realize that they had their new family center. So that was interesting to hear about that and the fact that teachers there had taken that on as one of their goals to involve more parents. And then I was able to go to Greeley Central's Radium Girls Performance. And oh my gosh, that was so good. And I know that Michael and Natalie also saw that. And Natalie, of course, has a personal connection, but we have some very talented young people in our community. So that was fun. And then I just want to thank everyone for their work with the MLO campaign. It was, I think we can all take a collective breath and say, we're really glad that's over. It was a lot of work, but I appreciate everyone, you know, the help of everyone. And just so you all know, in case you hear something, we did deliver thank you cookies last week to all sites. Michael and I did quite a few delivery deliveries. But just so you know, in case you hear any information. And the cookies were made by the cooking class at Greeley West, Brenda Guzman and her class. So that was, that was great. And I think that might be it.
Ms. Pappas, those cookies were a thank you from?
From the MLO campaign, from the MLO committee.
Do you know that? Yes, we all know that.
Mr. Norwood?
Well, I was fortunate enough to get an opportunity to be part of the District 6 CTE Advisory Council Meeting. I'm one of the advisory members there and enjoyed that. Got a chance to meet a couple of new teachers that are part of the CTE program here in District 6. And I think under Jenny's leadership, they're going to do fantastic. So that was good to get a chance to meet them and give a little input on what we could do to maybe help the students. I also was a judge last week at the DECA District 7 Conference that was held over at UNC. Never ceases to amaze me how well these school organizations prepare their kids for, and how well-mannered the kids are for the programs like that. So those two things were really special to get a chance to do that. And then kind of on a downer, I spent Saturday with Mr. Osmus standing out in the cold watching Northridge High School football lose. So their season is done. So now we get to look forward to some inside games.
Wrestling season.
Ms. Mash?
Well, I think the first thing that I did that I haven't had a chance to share with you guys about is go to the CASB delegate assembly. And I don't know if it makes me a nerd or what, but I just really enjoy it. The speakers that they have are always, I find inspirational. Dr. Joyce Brown, which some of us got to know. Brooks, Dr. Joyce Brooks, that we all got to hear, well, some of us got to hear speak before. She was a longtime board member, has just worked tirelessly in education and in desegregating schools in the South. And she's just extremely positive and was like, you all matter and your story matters and thank you for the work you do. And a lot of what she had us do was just get to know the people that were sitting around us. And so I think kind of her message was, again, like just getting to know our fellow board members, hearing each other's stories and that's the way that we're going to work together best to get, we have that personal connection. She also really encouraged us that if you hear, hey, this thing's going on in the New Year's School District, go find out, go find out what the real story is. And she gave a, you know, a touching story of a time where she completely assumed something before she had all the information. And that could have been really detrimental to the success of her school district if she hadn't, you know, taken the time to. So anyway, I really enjoy going there. Really, at the delegate assembly, we also get to network with our region. So our region includes Estes Park, I think Brighton, St. Braine, Windsor, Johnstown. And so, you know, you just get to hear some of the things that they're working on and excited about. Windsor also had a bond in the Mill Levees. We talked about that a little bit. And then the actual delegate assembly where we vote on all of those resolutions that Mr. Fall kind of presented an overview for us. And I think I sent you all the links so you can see what passed and what didn't. I don't know that there are any real big surprises. I think most things kind of went along the ways that District 6 was thinking and hoping. And if you have any specific questions, I don't have that all in front of me. You may remember that there were a couple of resolutions that were about the composition of the CASB board and potentially calling for the resignation of the CASB board. And so those two priorities got punted to the December convention. So if anyone wants to attend that and hear all of that conversation, the various perspectives are kind of working on amendments or there will just be further discussion about that. Because we didn't get to those until after it was already June. And we've been there, you know, for that duration. But it's a really fascinating process. I met a woman who is from a district that has 65 students in the district. So I was like, how many teachers do we even have? She's like, oh, we have one for kindergarten, one for first second. We have, you know, the person who does PE, but also is the custodian. Just really fascinating challenges that that presents. And then you have Denver Public Schools that has 107,000 students, or 78,000, I mean. So, 90,000. So some of the, I guess politics is sort of the word, but some of the frustrations, I think, in the CASB board, those types of concerns are, you know, what does go on in the political realm of rural versus urban? And does everyone have equal voice and things like that? So my perspective is that there wasn't anything nefarious that happened at the CASB board. Perhaps just differences of opinions and maybe people not feeling heard. So I look forward to some more interesting discussion on that. But again, if you have any questions, if you want to come along with me to that, I don't know what the rest of us are supposed to be doing at that time when we're at CASB, but I'll be going to that delegate assembly. And anyone who's not Terry, because she's the most, the most liked. Well, you will not be on the board next year or after that. But there are CASB board positions available. And usually you represent, or you would represent the region for, which, you know, those cities that I mentioned. Couple of other things that I got to do. I went to the Fred Chartis Museum Night and Michael was there and Ms. Sullivan was there. And if you're not familiar with Museum Night, they do projects, kind of like a science fair project, if you think about that. They do a presentation, they do a visual, and they do loops. That's their study. So this one was adapt. And I'm just, I'm always amazed at these kiddos, what comes out of their imagination around this one word. So one kid talked about how they had to adapt during quarantine versus just remote learning and all of the ways that that affected him. Somebody else wrote a little paragraph about a superhero and then created a screenplay. So that was the adaptation for the screenplay. Another kiddo talked about how bacteria adapt to antibiotics. A little girl, you know, trying, it was so moving. She talked about how she had to adapt as her parents got divorced. Talked about going from quadrupeds to bipeds, how it's better to have two feet than four feet because you can carry things, you can reach things up high. So it's just really amazing, like science, psychology, previous events, just. And those kids do such a great job. They get dressed up. They are professional in their presentations. It's great. I also got to attend the Madison Accountability Committee. That's one of my schools. And what I really appreciated about that, I don't know if other schools do this, but the principal has assembled a team of 4th and 5th graders that he asks, you know, so here are the supports that the adults think that we can put in place and what do you guys think you need to help you learn and to help you be successful. And so that was great to have them there with us, really engaged group of parents. And I also attended the refugee quarterly consultation. So all of the community entities that help with refugee resettlement and supports for new families to Greeley get together. And they shared data from the state and data from local. And what was really interesting is it's been a very slow to begin to get folks coming again after the pandemic. We have seen some Afghani parolees as well as Ukrainian parolees. But it's really picking up. And I think they had said something like they had seen 100 folks this year and like 50 in the last month. So a lot of new folks are coming. Lot of different languages, some of the, like, we have a large number of Somali refugees here in Greeley, but they were not able to come during the time when Somali was on that travel ban. So we might be able to see some more of those folks', family members being able to come. So it's always, it's great because they make a projection of how many people they can serve. And most of the time we don't meet that quota, but it's great to know that they have those resources in place should it work out that all those folks come. So I think that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Ms. Mash. Ms. Pappas?
Yes, I forgot to mention that, as we know, Mr. Teetz has been coming to our board for the last two years, talking to us about the issues with transportation on the city buses. And so after the last meeting, I believe, Mr. Osmus and I talked to Mr. Teetz about an idea of taking this problem to the Council of Student Reps. And they talked about it at the last meeting and they're going to have a special meeting this Wednesday to try to put together some sort of plan for talking to each of the high schools about common courtesy manners, just some of those things that he's been bringing to our attention. So just wanted to make sure you knew that. I don't know if he'll be here tonight or not, but just wanted to keep it in form. Yeah, yeah, it was kind of, it was a great idea. And he feels very, I think, very good about the thought. Yeah, do you have anything to add?
No, no, he just feels empowered. And so I think that was a great idea.
I would be wanting to go to some of the high schools if you guys end up scheduling something like that.
Okay. Let them know, yeah, definitely.
I don't have too much to add, just, yeah, going to Hyman, always great to see what's happening with our Huskies. I didn't actually get to make it to Radium Girls because I was out of town that weekend. But yeah, sad to have missed it. Greeley Central does such a great job with their theater program as well. I do think, one thing that didn't get mentioned that maybe we did since the last board meeting, was Ms. Pappas and I went to a bean topping at Nicker Elementary.
Oh, yes.
And it is great to see that bond issue just continue to do more than we ever thought. And to, I think, when we did that, we didn't think we'd be replacing any portables at Nicker necessarily, but we are. And it's just great to see. So thank you to our community for passing that. Thank you again to the community for repassing the MLO last week. It means such a great deal to our kids and to their future. So that's, that's all I've got because we are behind schedule. And I just want to move very quickly to your calendars and just point out a few things there. We do have to do new board member oath of office on Wednesday. We do have a visit to Chaplow on Thursday. They have, there's been more done since we, since we cut the ribbon. Not just some of the finishing touches that weren't quite done, I saw it the other day, looking great. So I encourage you guys to be able to make that if you can on Thursday. And then we are potentially canceling this board meeting on the 28th. We have that on our agenda tonight, provided everybody doesn't vote against that. And then we are at CASB. That's part of the reason for canceling that board meeting, just, we're committing a lot of time that week to the Board of Education. So we can, believe we could get everything that was going to be on that board meeting into this board meeting. So there you go. And then gap on, will be a gap on December 6th, and I'll stop right there. Anything, anything else in the immediate, immediate future that gets us up to the next board meeting? Okay.
A community event we could mention, there's a fundraiser for the Food Bank called Beaujolais Nouveau. It's this Thursday and it will be at Zoe's Cafe. You can go to the World Food Bank website to purchase tickets. And it's a silent auction, live music, drink the new Beaujolais Nouveau wine and eat good food and get dressed up.
Ms. Mash? All right, moving right along. F.A.M.L.I. leave. We're about 20 minutes behind time, but we will catch up if this, yeah.
I'll turn it right over to Ms. Sponsler, Chief Financial Officer, and Mr. Fall, in-house legal counsel. And just let them take it from here. I know you all received this information a couple of times now in your weekly memo, but we wanted to come before you tonight with an official presentation, give you an opportunity to ask questions. We do hope to, or tend to, bring this to the board tonight for a decision as well. So with that, Mr. Fall, Ms. Sponsler, it's up to you guys.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, members of the board. I'm Nate Fall, I'm legal counsel for the district. And sitting next to me is Megan Sponsler, the chief financial officer. And we're going to provide you with an overview of family. We have sent you a couple of factual kind of memorandums covering what family is, but we kind of wanted to use this as an opportunity to dive into it a little bit in further detail and to answer any additional questions that you might have. So what is family? Family is an acronym for the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Insurance Leave Act, or Leave Insurance Act, I should say. Family was passed by Colorado voters back in 2022. This was Proposition 118, if anybody is familiar. What family does is it provides access to pay leave to take care of self or others for most Colorado workers. Under family, it created what's known as PFML. PFML is Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. That's it for acronyms, so we don't have to worry about anything else. And when, with PFML, that will allow employees to take up to 12 weeks annually. And that begins in January 1st of 2024. So any districts that choose to participate will have to remit premiums for this year, but no employee will be able to take PFML leave until 2024. So under PMFL leave, eligible employees may use up to 12 weeks of PMFL for the following reasons. I want to read each of them to you, just so you can kind of have a strong understanding of what PMFL leave is. To care for an employee's own serious health condition. To care for an employee's new child during the first year after birth, after the birth, adoption, or placement through foster care of that child. To care for a family member with a serious health condition when employee's family member is on active duty military service or being called to active duty military service. And five, when an employee or family member is a victim of domestic violence, stalking, or sexual assault. So again, all eligible employees would be up eligible for up to 12 weeks annually. Family does include a carve-out for employees with a serious health condition related to pregnancy or childbirth complications. And they can receive an additional four weeks. That'd be up to 16 weeks of paid PFML leave. And then last, employees would not be required to take this leave consecutively. They could take it kind of however they wish throughout the year. When it comes to how employees will be paid out under family, they will receive between 65% to 90% of their wages. That amount is kind of based on a complicated formula that balances that employee's wage with the average employee's wage in Colorado. However, family was designed with an eye towards equity. And that's with lower wage workers will receive a greater share of their regular wages. But for all employees, their benefits would be capped at $1,100 per week. And so I will turn it over to Ms. Sponsler.
Thank you, Nate. So as a local government, one of the provisions of the law is that we have the opportunity to either opt in or opt out. And so there are kind of three options. So I'm going to go through each of those and what each of those options entails. So the first option, of course, is that we do participate in the Family Leave Act. There are some things that we would propose that you consider if that's the way you would want to go. Obviously, there's financial considerations because this is not a free program. There would be some potential contract and policy considerations that we would need to address. And then, of course, administrative considerations in terms of how are we going to actually implement and administer this in connection with the state. The second option is that we can decline the employer participation and still allow employees to participate. In that option, the district would be the one that would facilitate payments to the state. So we would be responsible for reporting payroll and withholding wages and submitting that to the state. The third option is that we would decline all participation in family. And this requires that all of you take action and you opt out. The caveat here, though, is that individual employees can still choose to opt in. They would just have to sign up through the state and go through that process and work through the state individually. So if we were to participate in family, it is the joint responsibility of the employee and employer to pay for it. And so right now, the rate is set in statute that it is 0.9% of an employee's salary. That is split 50/50, so the district would pay 0.45% and the employee would pay 0.45%. Then in statute, that rate could increase and is likely to increase to 1.2%. And that would also be split 50/50. After the two years, the legislature would have to make some sort of action. I suspect that the cost of this program is going to far exceed what this 1.2% will actually cover. And so I think that they would likely have to make the decision to increase that rate. As Nate said, employees would see a payroll deduction starting January 1st of 2023, but the benefits are not actually available until January 1st of 2024. And if we do opt into this, then every employee has to participate. They cannot individually opt out. And then the cost here, the big number, the portion that the district would have to pay is approximately $600,000 annually. Of course, if the rate goes up, the cost also goes up. And then here, another big sticker item, I believe, is that we would have to take on the administration of reporting everything, withholding the premiums, remitting payments, and facilitating this program with the state. So here, if we decline the employer participation, as I said, individual employees could still decide to participate and they would have to sign up through the district. We would have to report their wages. We would have to remit any payroll withholdings and make those payments to the state. This option, I think, is pretty fuzzy in terms of how much administrative burden it would put on the district. Because I think there would be a whole process that we would have to design in terms of how would we get employees to sign up or to waive this benefit. So I think that in itself could be very challenging just to go through that process. And then finally, we can decide to decline all participation. Again, the board has to take action in order to do that. And in that case, we would not have to pay anything to the state. The employee could still sign up and go through the state on their own and participate that way. So our administrative recommendation to all of you is that we opt out of all participation in family. There's a few different reasons for that, but I think the largest one, of course, is financial. It's a huge financial commitment to make that. It also is committing all of our employees to a financial commitment that they no longer have a choice in saying, yes, I want to participate or not. If we opt out, employees who want to participate still can.
So when it comes to the opt-out process, this is all via statute. So it does require a board of action, and there is an agenda item for tonight's meeting. And you would have to go through your ordinary motions process. So it would have to be a motion, a motion seconded and then approved by a majority of members present. Family does not require this be adopted by resolution. It's merely that the board, if it chooses to, opts out via vote. We do also provide public notice and comment to all employees. During last week's intercom, we provided notice to all of our employees that they have an opportunity to submit comments. As some of you have received via email, they've also had the opportunity to show up tonight and participate and provide testimony during tonight's board meeting. If the board does decide to opt out, then we have to go through an additional process with the family division and deliver written notice to the family division of the board's decision to opt out. We also will need to provide employees with notice. We have to provide individual notice to all employees. And then we also need to conspicuously post the board's decision to opt out, much like we do with a lot of our workers' comp and other safety notices. The board's decision is good for up to eight years. So it is November 14th, 2022 today. The board would have to revisit this decision. The board would have to revisit this decision no later than November 14th of 2030 if it decides to opt out again. However, you can reconsider your decision to opt in, and you can make that decision annually. So if next year you want to revisit this and decide that you want to participate, we can go through this process again, and you can make a vote to participate in family.
Can I ask a question right now?
Of course.
Before I forget. So if we were to wait a year and revisit this and decide maybe we wanted to opt in, it sounds like nobody can take advantage of this until 2024 anyway. Is that because it just doesn't take place until 2024, or is there a year timeframe? So if we revisited this in November of 2023, does that mean that they can't take advantage until 2025, or can they still take advantage in 2024?
I believe that they could still take advantage in 2024. The reason that there's a whole year of waiting is so that they can collect premiums to build up this pot of money to then pay those claims out as they are incurred. So they have to build up some cash flow before they can move forward.
Thank you. Sorry.
Of course. No, no, no problem. And then if the board does decide to reconsider and opt in to participate in family, then you would have to be participating for a minimum of three years, so you wouldn't be able to get out of it within a three-year period.
So one of the questions that we've received is what are the leave plans that the district does offer? And so, of course, we do offer family and medical leave, which is FMLA. This is through federal law that we do offer this. And the reasons you can take FMLA are very similar to the reasons you can take family leave. So there's really not that much difference. There's a few minor details that are a little bit different, but overall, the same reasons apply. And then in our master contract, we have several different types of leave identified, and we didn't get into detail here of what each of those are, but the big ones, of course, would be discretionary leave, sick leave, and then the sick leave bank. And so the sick leave bank is available to anyone who opts into the sick leave bank. There are certain criteria that they have to meet in order to take advantage of that leave bank, but that is administered by Ms. Snyder and our payroll office. And so they go through every month, and they go through all these sick leave bank forms and make those decisions. And then those other leaves are kind of more like a one-off type arrangement that if an employee needs to take educational leave or wants to take educational leave, they can, and then they can come back and their job is still there. So these are leaves available per the contract. And then for classified and APT employees, if you can see the different alphabet there with all the policies, but again, we have sick leave, we have sick leave bank, discretionary leave, and then for 12-month employees, we have vacation. And of course, FMLA is available as well. So we do permit employees to take leave in compliance with FMLA and other similar laws. Leave does accumulate from year to year, so it's not like you don't use it and you lose it. That's not helpful to anybody. And then we do have the sick leave bank for all employee groups. The one thing I would say is that with FMLA, it is an unpaid leave, but if you have leave, so if you have sick leave already built up, then you can use that concurrently. So your sick leave can match that. And then if you run out of sick leave, then that's when the sick leave bank can kick in. So a lot of times, we do have enough sick leave bank time, assuming the person opted in, to cover the 12 weeks or more. So that's it for our little summary, but we know that there will probably be questions.
Sure. Okay, so a couple of questions. Do you have to be a member of GEA in order to participate in the sick leave bank?
No.
And is there a minimum number of months of employment before you can use the sick leave bank?
I'm looking to my fairness saying no.
Do you feel like the sick leave bank ever, or at least often, runs out?
Yes, gaps.
There's criteria that you have to sort of prove, but have we ever had where there wasn't enough for everyone?
So the way it's set up, everyone donates a day when they first opt in, and so that kind of builds up the bank. And then as it's drawn down, once it reaches a certain point, then everyone has to give another day. And if you don't have a day to give, then you can either opt out and drop, or else as soon as you do have another day, you can rejoin. So it does, I would say that we probably contribute a day every year on average. It depends on the year. But the last couple, we haven't really. I think with COVID leave, that kind of took care of that. But in the past, it's just been kind of a day a year.
So Megan, so if an individual decides to do their own individual signup with the state, is it the same amount of money for them?
Yes, they just pay the 0.45%.
Okay. And then another question. So an employee can still use their discretionary days as well, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And how many discretionary days do we have?
So three discretionary days, and then they accumulate to five over the course of the years.
Okay.
How many people use, ever opt into the sick leave bank? I mean, is that most of our employees? Do we have any idea?
I don't have an exact number, but I do think it is most. Yeah. There's always, you know, the sad story of someone who didn't opt in that wishes they did, but you could see that happening with this as well.
If we opt out, if we take the option three, they opt in, we still just have to, all we have to do is adhere to allowing them the 12 weeks, right? It makes, changes like the legal standpoint of what we can and can't do.
Yes, that is correct.
Protects them a little bit.
Protects their.
And they could participate in both FAMLI and still use the sick bank?
That is something that I don't think you can do. I think that might be a rule that is still coming. That's a very good question. Do you have any insight on that?
Yeah. And I, yeah, I don't know if I want to necessarily answer that without being wrong, but I do believe that you can use your family leave and then use your sick leave bank, kind of, they're kind of separate leave that you'd be entitled to use, but I'm not 100% sure on that answer.
Seems super underfunded at first glance.
Yeah.
Which is a carrot in front of a horse, seems like.
Megan, I know you said you couldn't really say, but what do you think it would take administratively for us to administer this if we were to opt in? Would we have to hire more people?
Yes, I believe we would. I think there's really two components. One would be the signup process, that we'd have to figure that out. Then the whole withholding and reporting to the state. And then I think the part that would really impact human resources would be somehow you have to manage the leave and have someone serve as kind of that liaison between the state and the employee, and so that you know who is out on family leave and how long they're there and all of those pieces. And so I think that could be a full-time job very easily.
And we have a lot of, it sounds like we have a lot of things in place to support people. Do we have a sense of what other school districts are doing, or?
So in speaking with my friend, Nat, I told her that I was going to use my phone a friend. She had a meeting with some HR people last week, and she learned that only two districts that she's aware of have opted in. They are both very, very small districts, so it probably is a benefit to them. So, you know, most districts, large districts, are opting out.
I'll just add as a reminder that governmental entities, of which we are one, are the only entities that can opt out of this, correct?
Correct, yes.
So the private employers are required to do this, and we're not. And so as a result of that, I think most school districts are choosing to wait, especially to wait this first year, rather than to be a part of ceding that fund and not be able to access any benefit until January of '24. So, you know, I do feel like we all probably want to revisit this, you know, next summertime-ish, probably, or perhaps even during our negotiations, conversations, we may want to revisit this.
The other thing that I would offer, too, is that I believe that we could look at a short-term disability-type product that we could offer to our employees that would be less expensive and provide more benefits to our employees. So I think that that's another option that we could look into. We do not currently have a short-term disability plan, so that's something that we could do if you all wanted us to.
Yeah.
Would that be through the benefits package offered to the employees?
Yes.
And we would talk about that at negotiations?
Negotiations, and then, of course, when we bring the annual health insurance benefit renewal to you, you would all agree or not to doing that.
Any other questions?
Can I make a statement? Or do you want to save them for the discussion? Paying a tax with tax money seems a little redundant.
It's not a tax, it's an interest premium, but I also, if we're giving statements, I agree with, let's wait and see. Let's let somebody else get the program started and see how beneficial it is. But also, capped at $1,100 a week, there are many folks that that will not be sufficient to meet their bills, whereas if you use the sick bank, you get your full wage. So, yeah, I just, yeah, my concern is like, is it running out? Do we have a lot of people who are not being able to pay their bills when they have an emergency situation? I also appreciate that there's not certain months you have to wait because you might be a brand-new hire and get in a car accident the day after you start at work, and hopefully you can be compensated right away, so.
Any other questions or statements? All right. Thank you both. Very informative. Thanks for putting that together for us. Don't go anywhere, I don't think, Mr. Paul, because we have legislative priorities. Up next, Dr. Pilch?
Yep. This should be a fairly brief presentation. Again, we're on this path of getting caught up. The legislative season hasn't heated up fully yet, but it's that time of year where we start to have conversations with our lobbyists, and we start to have conversations around legislative priorities.
Thank you again, Dr. Pilch, board directors. I shared this with you via email. I really want to use this more as an opportunity to hear from you about any priorities that you might have in terms of the upcoming legislative session. I just want to point out that our lobbyist for District 6 is Ann Barkis. She's of Barkis Mendez and Associates. She's been with the district for quite some time, and she's always willing to help us out kind of with any legislative priorities that we might have. I did include a couple of topics that I thought were important, and I'll just run through them briefly. The first one is written notice requirements under Colorado's open meeting law. I know this was kind of an issue in August, where you were all sent via certified mail an overnight notice regarding an upcoming board meeting, and we have to do that because that is what the statute requires. That ended up costing, I don't even know how many, $100 or more, just to send that written notice. Under Colorado law, there is a statutory carve-out for rural districts, where you can send that notice for upcoming board meetings via electronic mail. That electronic mail notice requirement is not allowed for districts of our size, and that seems a little bit silly to me. And so this is something that I've reached out to Ms. Barkis already about potentially changing the law to allow districts of our size to have that kind of electronic notice requirement. I think it would be certainly cost-effective. I mean, it would just kind of save the headache of providing notice in the way that we were already having to do that. You all have access to D6 emails, so I don't think that that would necessarily be a problem for District 6. And the burden of just hand-delivering, if we decide to not mail notice out to you all, would put pressure on either our board secretary or whoever we would require to send that notice. So that's just something that I know Ms. Sullivan had kind of raised some concerns with in August, and so this is something I would like to work on with our legislature. As far as school finance, I did speak with Megan earlier about school finance. We're unlikely to see a forecast until likely March. The Joint Budget Committee did meet today to talk about the governor's proposal. It sounds like it was pretty positive in terms of school, but we know that with rising inflation, that may lead to some tough financial decisions down the road, and so they're going to be looking at that not until later in March. And so any hope that the School Finance Act will pass sooner rather than later is more or less a pipe dream. And so I think, but really, unless you have any questions about kind of those two priorities I just mentioned, I just wanted to hear you all out, and if there's any topics you want me to cover with Ms. Barkis, I'd be more than happy to. And then, of course, as the legislative session goes underway, I'd be able to talk with her some more, so.
Hey, do we know of anyone who might carry or sponsor those bills?
So Ms. Barkis said she could start working with some representatives on that, and I'd be happy to help draft the language. I don't think it would be a huge issue, especially the written notice requirement. I've already thought it up in my head about how that would look, and I don't think it would be entirely complicated, so.
Does our state legislature, this would probably be more, I guess, for our congressional team that goes to Washington, but I know there's always talk at CASB about the IDEA, special education not being fully funded, which the federal government promised many, many years ago. So always continued pressure for that to be fully funded.
Yeah, and did they talk about that at the?
I mean, that's a standing resolution. There's like a few federal resolutions, and there's a group from CASB that goes to the national school boards, associations, and things like that, too, so. I don't know what we do with that exactly. As a, yeah. Maybe we'll write to our new CDA representative.
That would be, that would be nice to stop putting the notice back on local school districts to support that really high financial burden, so.
What I do think we have seen come through with legislation is, with the governor's proposal, is more funding from the state level related to special education. So I think that's something we should certainly pay attention to and would, again, see as a priority if there is additional funding that could come through the state funding formula for students who identify for special education services.
Just a quick question on the electronic notification. I want to get up to speed with my electronics. Would a text be acceptable? Would it mainly be email?
I, we can talk more about that, but I believe it'd probably be email would be the best way to go about that, unless you want your phone to be subject to.
I don't know how to get to half my stuff on there anyway, so.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. We can work with you on that.
Any other questions, guys, from Mr. Paul? Well, thank you, Nate. That's a great idea. It seems like, I know it's a small expense, it doesn't happen often, but, yeah, it does seem antiquated to have to mail out a notice for meetings, so thank you for coming up with that.
Yeah, I used the word silly. I think antiquated is a little bit better.
Try to be different, man. Thank you. All right, we are now to community engagement. And so we started, I think, with Ms. Bynum? Starting with Ms. Bash? Or, sorry, we don't go around for community engagement. I'm talking about debrief the work session. Is there anything that we need to say on community engagement?
It's like we've been pretty engaged. I feel like we've been pretty engaged. What'd you say?
We could deal with the whole lessing, right, for the next few weeks?
I was just going to ask if there was any additional thinking that would be good to do, or I remember back in like 2019, we went to a lot of different entities, Rotary Clubs and community groups, just to kind of give updates on the school district. I feel like we stopped that because of COVID, but...
We did some, but we've continued to do that. At each of the Rotary Clubs, we've had presentations in the last few months, Kiwanis. So I think we're still out and about doing those. But if you all are parts of organizations that you would like us to get invited to and could help make a foray into that for us, we would welcome that. We'd welcome you to be a part of the presentation with us if you'd like to be. But, you know, I think it's important for us to get out as much as we can and be in the community and be in the community and presenting to the community. And I know you're right, we did lose some of those contacts during the pandemic when folks weren't meeting in person, and so, yes.
Yes, however, we can say thank you in whatever form we have to say thank you. We need to say thank you to our members.
Yeah, no kidding.
Continually funding our students and all of our programs.
Can we, can we, Ms. Myers, don't you have a thank you going out now to people for the...
You have a draft that you need to review.
Okay, right, but at some point, we will be sending out a thank you, correct? Yes.
So what they're referencing is, I've asked Ms. Myers to prepare a draft for, that would come from the board or from board president and vice president to the community, thanking them for their support of the Mill Levy override. And then we'd hopefully have that in our local paper and push it out on social media and those pieces.
That's great.
I don't know if the board received what we sent out last week to staff, so I should, I will share that with you all. Yeah, we will share that with you all.
I agree. Anything else on community engagement?
I'll just update you that with Lisa leaving the Immigrant and Refugee Center, we had a little bit of a slowdown in setting up a listening session there, but just today, I did ask Mr. Lamos to work with the IRC to identify who can help us to set that up and what's the best time of day and day of week to do that so that we can still do that listening center or that listening session at the Immigrant and Refugee Center. So that's, more to come on that.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's debrief our work session, and now we'll start with Ms. Masch.
It's always fun to hear what everyone's been doing and their experiences out in the schools and sporting events, even if they were cold and didn't go the way you wanted them to. Thank you, Ms. Sponsler and Mr. Fall, for the detailed information about family leave and also for answering my questions on email. I feel very strongly that we want to take care of our employees when unexpected or planned needs arrive, but I feel confident in your recommendations and, yeah, thank you for all the detailed information as well as forward-thinking into legislative priorities, and just have to be thinking about that.
Just want to say thank you to Ms. Sponsler and Dr. Fall as well, too. I had a lot of questions today, and I called President Matthews, like, I'm trying to find this, I'm trying to find this. Fortunately, I think you got ahold of Dr. Fall, and I got the information, and I had questions and they got answered, so I appreciate that.
Ms. Spons?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. It made things very clear. I did forget to mention something in my comments, and I think it's important to mention that the Hispanic women in Weld County, their breakfast, their annual breakfast was on Saturday, and they recognize a number of people at their breakfast, but Veronica Lucero, the assistant principal at Billy Martinez, was recognized for educator of the year. And so that was, yeah, that was a great honor for her, and it was, she's a wonderful person, and her story is great. I think it's just, if you know Veronica, listening to her story will be a meaningful experience for you, so I wanted to bring that up.
Mr. Billman?
Yeah, thanks to Megan and Nate, I'm pretty familiar with the act. I followed it fairly closely, so I had my opinions, but glad to hear what it means for the district. So thanks for putting all that together, and I'm just excited for the work we got to do coming up in the holiday season, so happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, again, thank you for the report. That makes things very clear for us, so we appreciate all the work and input that went into that, so. Great, guys, thank you for your time as well, and we're almost back on track, so we'll adjourn for dinner.